To the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in a closed meeting on public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements? And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, or heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Hips?
Yes.
Mr. Hargis?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move we go back to regular session.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does anyone have anything to add to the agenda as written?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion due today is a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have citizen public comment period. This time, it's provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to these citizens. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes.
Okay, we have Mrs. Johnson.
Is that relevant to a John?
Hang on a minute, Ellen. Do what?
Yeah, I think she's gonna speak.
Yeah, she gonna. You gonna speak on it in the public hearing, aren't you?
No, number seven event application. She wanna speak to that.
Special events, that what you want to speak on, or not? Okay. Ah, I got you.
I think she did right.
Uh, yeah. Scott Hargis, same situation. Well, yeah, okay. All right. Anyone else would like to address the board who failed to sign up? Speak now if I ever hold your peace.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. I'm learning all kind of things here tonight. Ms. Johnson, please come forward.
I hope they were all there.
Oh, they were. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Y'all know I'm Eleanor Johnson. I reside at one twenty-five Hawk Lane, Pamplin. And like I said, I'm getting used to coming to see you all now. I'm back again to ask you all to please deny Amy Ward's permit for another marijuana festival, this time called Croptober Festival. She apparently has a hard time telling the truth about everything. I looked at her permit, excuse me, and she states that this is the first time event. This is not so. She has had several events over the past year. In fact, she did have an event after you all denied her permit last year in October. She advertises that she has a forty acre farm. If you look at your records, it's a twenty-six acre farm. She also has a video on Facebook that thanks the zoning administrator, building official, fire marshal, sheriff, public safety director, and county administrator for their support and letting them do what is legal at her end of the road. She also states if you missed her first event, please come to the second one. So it's definitely not a first time event. Ms. Ward also states that neighbors are notified. That has never been done. She had a festival last year and several events, and we know that no one was notified. She also needs to notify her neighbors that are several miles away because of the noise Her permit also states she's expecting three hundred people. And as I stated to you all when I come in about the road situation, in October of last year, there was over sixteen hundred cars in and out in a three day period. That is more than three hundred people. Add 'em up. There's also a video of the Times-Virginian on her Facebook page where the headline said that you all had denied the fly high permit. And the caption read, and I quote, "Our last event was legendary. The crazy part is that it only gets better and better," end quote. Every time I look over her permit, I find something that I find a discrepancy in. One of them, she claims that she has purchased the forty acres from her parents. If that's so, why does Dennis Berkendall sign off as the owner on the permit for the land? Y'all question this. I don't need to question it. I will give her credit, she did come to our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary celebration at our church. This was just yesterday. First time I've seen her at church, and I do think it's ironic that she came the day before you all were gonna meet today to approve a permit. I am just asking y'all once again to try to keep the dope out of the county. Marijuana leads to bigger, stronger stuff, and we do not need it here. I can tell you, Alphamix already has a reputation. If you want dope, go to Alphamix County and you can get it. That's not a very good reputation for our county. Thank you for your time.
Let me, uh, let me remind the gentlemen that if you have hats on, please take 'em off. Thank you. Yeah. Please state your name and address for the record.
Scott Hargis, live at four-twenty-seven Hawk Lane. I'm right next door to the Benkendorfs, where the wards wanna have their, uh, festival. I'm sure there's gonna be a common theme throughout tonight, so I'm gonna just try to hit some of the highlights. Uh, noise. The code states that the sound level shall not be unreasonably audible beyond the property holding the event. I'm estimating my house is about three hundred yards from the event, and the noise inside my brick home can be heard over top of the TV. It's that loud. The four-twenty fly high festival that was denied this, this year was so loud that my cows were extremely agitated, they were excited, they were running across the pasture. I would say that you can conclude that that's unreasonably audible. As she stated, they've only got less than thirty acres. That's not enough land to have an event of this size and not impact your neighbors. It's just not. Uh, security. This is not a small gathering of close friends, no matter what they say. This is three to four hundred at least total strangers coming into our community engaging in drug use. Ask any police officer, they will tell you that drug use and increased crime rate go hand in hand. The wards cannot provide adequate security, there's no way, and it's gonna lead to a problem. There's gonna be a problem, whether it's a breaking and entering or something worse, far worse. Liability. There are several properties that come together down at Swanee Creek. Mine actually goes across it, butts up against theirs. They intend to use that during this event. There's nothing to keep these impaired people from wandering across the property line, and if they get hurt on your property, there's gonna be a liability issue. That's unacceptable. Traffic is, I probably shouldn't even say it, I mean, over sixteen hundred cars on a dead-end, single-lane, gravelled road. That's just ridiculous. Uh, one last thing. All of the property that I own Hawk Lane is zone agricultural. That doesn't allow operation of a campground or a festival of this nature. It doesn't. I've been told, I don't, I can't verify, but I've been told that they've got a conditional use permit to operate a campground. If this is true, the code clearly states no conditional use permit can be granted except without notification of adjacent property owners in the hearing. That was never done. The code also, uh, states that consideration must be given to compatibility of the proposed use with the existing use. It's all farmland. I have cows, there's donkeys, there's horses, there's crops. This is not a festival atmosphere. The level and impact of noise generated in relation to the uses, it's driving my cows crazy. Driving me crazy, but once it starts impacting my cows, they don't understand. How do you, how do you deal with that? Traffic and adequacy of roads and, uh, circulation problems. It's a one-lane road, dead-end, cars stacked up. I, I didn't leave my property last time, during the last event, because I was concerned about the, uh, security issues. But I was told that there were multiple times when my driveway was completely blocked. Last thing is environmental impact in creeks and streams. There's a stream that runs down the property line into the Swanee Creek. If they're having this event and it's down in this area, no telling what it is. None of these code requirements were met, and if the wards do have a conditional use permit, it should be immediately revoked. This Croptober Fest, if it's denied, what, what will be done to prevent it from going on as planned, like the four-twenty fly high event? I mean, that's, if this was next door to anybody else, they would be having a fit. Sorry, I went over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me ask, uh, Mr. Latchner, uh, legal opinion here. Is there anything the board can do to prohibit?
Why don't you just get to that agenda item and vote on it first, and then depending on your vote, we can come up with a decision.
Okay. Okay, let's, uh...
Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. Mr.?
There's two, two things that bother me. You know, I agree wholeheartedly in what they say, but I have a little difficulty because after the last non-permitted event that was, wasn't held, these people spoke about stuff. And then, you know, now they come and speak tonight, and even though I agree what they speak, some of their credibility is, to me, is questionable because if everything they say was true in talking to the sheriff, the sheriff was never notified of any of these problems. And I'm sure that sixteen hundred cars would go down there, it would be a problem that the sheriff should know about. If this gentleman's having noise at his house, that's something the sheriff be noted about, you know, notified about. And if my understanding is, if the sheriff been notified, then I think it's a misdemeanor ticket could have been issued for having the, the event without a permit. Uh, I, I just, I support him, but I do have those questions, that's...
Let's move on to number seven. Okay. All right, number seven, a special event permit application, Croptober. And we have before us a special event permit application for Mrs. Amy Ward for a Croptober starting Thursday, October thirteenth at four P.M. and ending Sunday, October sixteenth at ten A.M. The event will be located at four fifty-one Hawk Lane, Pamplin, Virginia. This is an event to celebrate and educate the growth of hemp, CBD, and legal organic cannabis. The admission fee is eighty-five dollars in advance and/or ninety-eight dollars at the gate. There will be music bands, food trucks, arts crafts, vendors at the event. Overnight camping and yurts are available for a fee. The zoning administrator, building administrator, uh, official, fire marshal, sheriff, public safety director, and county administrator have reviewed, have reviewed the application for compliance with local regulations and have added comments where necessary. Now, Mr. Latchner, we gonna take a, take a vote, huh?
I think you gotta let Ms. Ward present.
Oh, she's, okay, come on up, Ms. Ward.
Hello, all. Thank you for your consideration. I am grateful and humbled to be able, for myself and these two rocks, I have two rocks that are important to me, huh, to be able to be here tonight. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that I do follow all Virginia legislation regarding growing cannabis, as well as I am a licensed hemp farmer. Um, I advocate for both plants. I also advocate for the law. On my farm, the law is posted. Um, and I not only follow the law myself, but I expect for my guests to follow the law as well. Um, I educate them on the law and also advocate for ways that I believe that the law should be changed, um, to help farmers that are growing hemp that has incredible, um, uses for our economy and for the state of Virginia. However, that's a long debate, and I was honored to be able to speak to a running senator yesterday about that, so I'm not gonna go into a lot of it here. So I was reminded just yesterday, and thank you, Ms. Johnson, for noting that I was there, and perhaps I can come back more regularly. But I was invited by Pastor Doug, and he did speak against us last time, and I'd like to note his absence today. I'm not gonna speak for him, but he did personally reach out to me and tell me that he would not oppose me, that he, um, had he known me, that, uh, he would be more supportive. Um, we have had several, several conversations. I care very much for the land. He has, um, acknowledged and appreciated that, and so that's why I was invited yesterday to learn more about the history. Um, yesterday, I was reminded that it takes courage to stand up for something that is not of popular opinion, and, uh, so I'm trying to be courageous. I learned the story of Samuel Harris in seventeen seventy-one. He was actually imprisoned for what he believed in. Um, I shook hands with a descendant of the Dickersons, and it reminded me that I fight for my descendant, well, for my family. My mom died on that land, and something special happens when your family becomes part of that land. So I do care very much for the land, for the creek, for the history. And I'll be honest, before the last meeting, I was kind of meek and quiet about what I believed in, and then they put my name and address on the front page, on the headline. I had never intended for my address to be on the front page of somebody who grows cannabis or who was a hemp farmer. I know that that's, uh, open knowledge, and you can look it up, but people don't generally look for us. I never used to wear my cannabis earrings out in public before that day, and I do now. Um, I couldn't find them tonight, or I would've worn them. So it gave me an opportunity to share more than I had been in the past. Um, it gave my, my business has grown, the B and B that I run there on the family farm, I take a lot of pride in. Um, we provide a lot of hospitality. I bring them home-cooked meals. I provide food out of my garden, not just cannabis, not just CBD, but tomatoes, and we grow loofah on the farm. Um, I then, uh, I'm switching back to something here. So then, next, I, I just wanted to say that I would like to address the concerns of the last meeting and note that I did address the concerns that were brought before me. Um, the music, the Times were honored, one hundred percent. The police were absolutely notified of our presence, and the cars, they were nowhere near sixteen hundred. I can promise you that. We did a check-in with every vehicle that came onto my property. Um, we did check and follow and make sure that if we changed wording and changed some vendors and changed things, that we could be considered a campground for that period of time because we had already received that campground permit. And so we followed the law with that. We had to change a few things, and we did, and any, anything that they asked us to do, we did. We did not have one single complaint. Um, we did have, sheriff was called several times, and they sent out the V-DOT trucks to make sure that we never had the road blocked. We never had the road blocked, not once, not for a maybe fifteen seconds, for less than a minute. We made sure that what was brought up was honored. I actually went and knocked on the Johnson's door and asked them if I could periodically run the hose to keep dust down. They told me, no, thank you, and I wasn't able to do that. I would make that offer again this time if there's any other resource that I can do, if there's a, something that is environmentally friendly that I could put on the road to keep it down. I'll tell you what I did do about that, though, is I talked to my other neighbor, um, Jane Metzger, and she gave me permission to put signs, and I made the signs that say, it's got a turtle on it, says, "Drive slow." Another one says, "Enjoy the journey." Another one says, "You're going too fast." I'm gonna do like eight signs there and repeatedly, because I do understand that dust comes up, and it depends on the weather of that day, and it depends on how cars come, if they come one minute apart, or if they come an hour apart, the dust is different, and I'm sorry for that. I wish we could do more on our roads. So then the other thing that was, the neighbors have called on me twice lately. I think once they found out about this event was coming up, they've called twice. The actual police did have to come out twice, both times our music was off. So we honor that. Every single day of the week, we honor eleven P.M. One night, it was actually my son playing his car radio out by the fire, and he turned it off at ten fifty-five, and the police showed up at eleven-ten. And we showed him, the car's parked out front now. They're, uh, we, we shut it off. They said that nothing good could come of this festival, and so I would like to say that I did talk to our, my three closest retail neighbors, which was Sunoco, Exxon, and Family Dollar. All three of them said increases for that weekend were three times or greater for that weekend. Um, that is something good. Money is not the only thing, though. However, so this time, we added a food bank at our check-in, and we are gonna donate that food back to the community. We are also offering a portion of the camping proceeds back to Rocks Church, and I am honored to do that. It, I, I wish that it would be anonymous, but my point is, there is good that comes from our community. I asked, and he has not responded yet. He said, "Yes, but I have to check my schedule." So I'm not speaking out of turn, but he, he said, "Yes, but I wanna check my schedule." He, Pastor Doug's gonna come out and do a service for us on Sunday. That is sharing our history. That is sharing the creek. That is sharing our community. That is sharing with as many of my neighbors as I'm able to. For me personally, something good that came out of it was a closer relationship with my neighbors, with my community growers. I have had several other hemp growers come out and talk with me, and we are networking more, and we are going to go to Congress, and we are going to do it the right way. Do you know that right now, for every strain of hemp that we grow, it has to be tested, and each single strain is a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar test? That's like tomatoes. How many strains of tomatoes are you growing in your yard? Hemp has zero, or it has to have, under point oh-three THC. It is not a drug. It is not a gateway. It is, it, it is a plant. Another thing that was brought up was it was gonna be a war zone. I'm gonna tell you that we have never had the police come to our home. We have never had an incident, um, other than when they came and the music was already off. The other thing that I can tell you about is to combat that is that I invite you. I invite each of you to come. By the way, when I read that, that said, "I want to thank the town, I want to thank the people that approved," I read that directly out of the paper. I, directly, I said a sentence out of the paper, I was holding the paper. So I was not misquitting you. You all did approve that, and I am thankful for it. And I know it got denied, that's the headline. All, all of those things are true, but it's all about kind of context of where, you know, we, we all have a truth. And, uh, so then, if I could try to combat today, or I am not trying to lie, again, we all have a truth. So I do call it forty acres, and the reason is, I believe it is thirty-eight point three-eight with our three combined, which is family. It's fam, it's my brother, it's my dad, it's my, my own. And we have a, I have a lease purchase agreement with my dad. That is not a lie, but that is why he has to sign it as well. This is our, it, my understanding of the word "first" was because it's not an annual, it wasn't a repeat. Yes, we did have four-twenty. I'm not saying that we don't do other things on the farm, but it was my understanding that this was the first time that I'm asking for Croptober. If I come back next year, then it would be a second annual. Right now, it's the first. So I did not mean to lie about that. We strongly advocate against illegal drugs. You said that, you know, it's a gateway, or there's other things happening. We strongly, strongly advocate. Again, the only thing that I can say is there were zero drunk-driving incidents, there were zero fights, there were zero medical, you know, um...
Ms. Ward, can you?
Wrap it up.
You, yeah, you allocated fifteen minutes.
I am so sorry. Um, I think that's it. That's all I can tell you, is please come. Um, I, I respect all of it. And if today's not the day, then I'll come back and try again, and, uh, really, no matter what the outcome is, I am humbled to be able to at least stand up here and smile and tell you that I'm, I'm not a druggie down at the end of the road, and I'll follow the law. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Board member concerns, issues, conversation on the subject? Would like to add this, that, uh, according to the county records, no, uh, conditional use permit was ever issued. Any other concerns, uh?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
Um, everything that I said last year still applies. Um, I can, and I do think this application is better than the last one. However, there are still inconsistencies in it. You say that, you know, and even in your presentation, you say, "Well, there wasn't that many people." But then you quote three businesses that had their business tripled because of your event. Well, which is it? Did you draw a lot of folks, or didn't you? You said that, um, that everything's gonna be legal, and there's a vendor on your website advertising that for a two-hundred-dollar donation, you'll get some free bud. Well, that's against the law. You can't do that. You can't trade marijuana for money any kind of way, or choking, or, I can't sell you this pen for two-hundred dollars and then, "Oh, I'll give you some marijuana." You can't do that. So there are still things that concern me. Uh, the greatest probably thing that concerns me is the fact that on your own page, it's advertised as a four-day event for stoners. Stoners don't go to hemp farms. And that's, I will be voting, I'll make a motion to deny the permit.
All right, motion's made. That's second. I'll second it. Will they have a roll call vote? Mr. Hips?
So affirmative vote is denying the permit.
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Henkel?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye.
Mr. Chairman, I also have a follow-up question.
Okay.
So just like last year, when we denied the permit and they had it anyway, what is, what are our resources? If, if, if we can deny a permit and somebody can just do what they wanted to do anyway, what's the purpose of us having a permitting process?
Mr. Latchner?
Uh, the board can instruct me to go to court, file a petition for an injunction, and get a court order enjoining her from having any additional events of any kind there, and then it comes to contend in court if she has another, has another event. So if the board instructs petition for an injunction, so if she has this event, if, now that you voted to deny, if she has this event, then my suggestion would be at the next board meeting, you, you ask me to file an injunction, and we'll get a court order that prohibits her from ever having another event ever on their property, and at the risk of going to jail.
Okay. Thank you for that. One thing we got to remember, our next board meeting's October seventeenth, and her activity is the thirteenth through the sixteenth, so we need to make a decision tonight.
We already did. But what, what I'm saying, if she, now that you've denied... But what I'm saying, if she, now that you've denied this permit, if she has this event, we're gonna, and violates your denial on the meeting on the seventeenth, y'all ask me, and I'm gonna go to court, and we're gonna get a permanent injunction to enjoin her from having any events of any kind ever again.
Okay, I got you. All right. Very well. Next, we have Mr. Watkins Abbott, Mr. Bill Jamison, and Mr. Winford Nash have requested to appear for the board to discuss funding for the American Civil War Museum. Welcome, sir, and welcome, sirs.
Thank you, gentlemen and county administrators. Good to be back with you all. I hope you all are doing well. I see nothing much has changed around. Still takes a long time to do, not a whole lot sometimes. But it is a public's business. I'm here on behalf of the Civil War Museum, and with some really good news. And I know some of you all have been asking, "Sir," on advisory committee, I've just come on in the last six, six weeks. But there's new leadership, new director at Civil War Museum, and, and new dedication to Appomattox. I think I'm, I'm really pleased with the dedication they've given, and they're willing to step up, we're seeing what we can do with increasing membership, with increasing programs for schools. And they've asked, we've asked a number, all three of us, and we're asking people in, in the community to step up financially and help them, and our request to you tonight is asking you to do what, what you did for the first ten years, is dedicate, not ten years, but five years at $15,000 a year to the museum. And I'll remind you, when we, every thousand visitors we get to Appomattox, it creates one new job. So economically, I think it's a benefit for us. I can go on, I will tell you, if y'all all remember, when you played, you were small and you played baseball with the big guys, and they let you take the first two strikes, but then the big person, big guy would step up and take your last strike. So I'm a front person, and I got Bill and Winford here to take a third strike, if y'all have any questions.
I just have one for the committee, and that is, the town, have they come, have they came forth? Y'all may not have visited them, yeah.
Uh, no, I do, I will.
I understand.
I think somebody will.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I certainly hope they will step up, and I'm sure they were requested. I, I don't know who's gonna go before the town.
Any other questions, Mr. Abbott, or the committee? All right, well, Mr. Henkel.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I know, when the museum brings people in, the town gains. They gain sales tax, they gain meals tax. The county gets no revenue stream basically from the museum getting people in. It's the town. Am I right?
Well, we do get, everything that's sold in a gift shop, we get 1% of the sales tax comes to the county from, from, from the sales and that. And, and, you know, we, when businesses, I understand the taxes, but when business has benefit, we all benefit. I wish the General Assembly finally gave us permission to have a meals tax. I wish we could. But the town is there before, so, just like same as the cigarette tax. They're giving us permission to pay out cigarette tax, we get to have to get the town's permission to do it. So I agree with the town's benefits, and I hope they'll step up. But if it benefits the museum and people here, it benefits us all.
Mr. Hogan?
Mr. Chairman, what, if they don't get this money, what's the, the downside, I mean, I guess, why do they need it?
Well, they need, there's several things that need to do, do at the museum. One thing, I think the meeting rooms need to expand, they need to expand their programs to, to further, to reach out farther and, and get more, more visitors there. I, I hope they won't, I hope y'all will give us money. I mean, I don't know what the downside is, but it's certainly, if we don't get the funds, it's a sign that we are not interested in expanding one of, one of the great places for people to visit Appomattox.
Any other questions, concerns? Well, thank you for taking the time out to come by and talk to us, you and your committee, and we'll decide something right here. So, gentlemen, we've heard Mr. Abbott's report.
I told you, that's gonna take a third strike.
Yeah.
I'm Bill Jamison, live out on the Redhurst Road. And I know y'all are busy, y'all are listening to a lot, but this has been going on, I've been involved in this probably for the last three years, because the museum has really been on the downside. The folks in Richmond, they had a big museum down there, and they got all interested in that. And my emphasis, and I guess Paul Harvey probably tricked my interest probably three years ago, and we, several others started getting together and having meetings, and what could we do? My big emphasis was, at Appomattox, if we want supportive of Appomattox, we gotta have representation from Appomattox. And now they've got a new director, this guy has done everything, and I think y'all met him one of your previous board meetings. He's done everything that he said he would do. He's said he'd be at Appomattox at least once a month. He has done that plus more. He has gotten us approved for our local advisory board for the museum, and we also have a amendment from an advisory board that sits on the big board in Richmond. Now, y'all were very supportive, and the town was supportive of this when they came in, everybody thought it was great. But we need y'all's support to get the support of everybody else. If the board of supervisors and the town of Appomattox, now I personally plan to go to the council, to make this film, same pitch to the council. So if we don't get the support of y'all, you know, I don't, we're gonna have a hard time selling us, getting our other citizens to support this thing. I'm ready to go tomorrow to start this, listen, money, but we need your support tonight to make this thing really viable, to make it move forward. And Bill, I don't have the answer to what your question was, what happened with Earth this money? You know, it's not good, it's not gonna get better with Earth money. So we need your help, we need your support, and I would really encourage you to vote for it tonight, support us, give us your support, so we can go ahead and get other support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have you, do you strike two? You want to address the board?
My, my name is Winford Nash, and I live at the intersection of Promised Land Road and Central Church Road, and doesn't get any better than that, so. But I'd like to just add the point that, I think we have to think about the fact that we're in, I, I won't say COVID is over with, but people are beginning to want to get out and travel. And I think the museum has got a real opportunity right now to expand its programs, and that's what we need some funds for, is to be able to expand our program, to educate our young people, and bring people, people to Appomattox. So I think the window that we have open for the next twelve, twenty-four months is very critical for the, for the viability of the museum long-term. So, and that's why we came tonight, went asking for y'all's support, because I echo what Mr. Jamison said. I think with the support of the board of supervisors in Appomattox County, I think we sent in a, a message that, one, that we would have very much difficulty defending. So I would appeal to you to, to support that effort, because I think it's a, a good thing for Appomattox County.
I thank you. Questions, concerns? Mr. Hogan?
If I could ask Mr. Jamison a question?
Why?
If, are y'all looking for fifteen total, or are you looking for fifteen from us and more from the town?
More from the town, fifteen per year for five years, for four, six, five. That's what y'all do for the first ten years.
And, and how long of a commitment are you looking for?
Five years.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Mr. Henkel?
Well, I'm, I'm looking at Pandora's Box here. You know, Atmac's Suites, you know, gets X amount of dollars for so many years. So what happens then? Are we setting a precedence where if down the road, Atmac's Inn gets in a little trouble, and they say, "Well, you know, we're the only major hotel in the, in the county, and the county needs us, we need financial help, we need to have that agreement re-upped again." And, you know, we're not a wealthy county, we're not Campbell County, we're not Bedford County, and we've tried to keep our taxes down, so as not to put financial pain on our residents, and I just, I got some financial concerns in, in about a president that we might be sitting, where other businesses might say, "Well, hey, you bailed out them, you bailed out this business." Other than that, if there's a vote on any issue tonight, Mr. Chairman, I will abstain, because I feel as being a member of the Appomattox Museum Advisory Committee, that it would not be, the optics would be bad for me to vote on the issue.
Any other concerns, issues? Mr. Hips?
I suppose, since I'm the last to say anything. I absolutely wish that we could take more advantage, you know, from a tourism perspective of what we have here, and I've, you know, I've consistently felt that way. The, the issue I have is, Ms. Adams, how much money do we give to promoting the county in our budget every year for the, from the marketing standpoint? Ten thousand, is that?
We, we give, we make a $5,000 annual donation to the museum, specifically to them. And then the other tourism activity is probably another 10 to 15 thousand.
With Don Jones specifically?
That's a tourism group that does the marketing.
That was 10,000?
That's eight, eight thousand, I believe.
Okay. Kind of echoing what Mr. Henkel's statements are as well, I mean, we're talking about $15,000 of taxpayer money for five years. For a, a for-profit museum, correct?
No, it's not for profit, it is a nonprofit. That's the difference. When you talk about bailing out a business, that you talk about the hotel, that's totally different than a nonprofit.
I appreciate knowing that it's nonprofit. That, that, I do think that brings some additional consideration. I, I, I would be okay with doing, with seeing what would happen after a year. We're obligating taxpayer money to something, and that's the part that makes me uncomfortable. I'm not comfortable with committing five years to that. That's where I'm at.
Well, I, on the other hand, know that Appomattox needs tourism. No question, we at, we at the centerfold of tourism, right here. No other locality, no other place has history like we do. In order to obtain that, in order to keep it, I think we need to do what we can to help businesses or slash museums, whatever, to stay afloat and to move forward. I know it's been, attendance has been down at the museum, and that's due to a lot of things. But on the other hand, I'm willing to take a chance. So far as I'm concerned, I'll make a motion, we approve it for five years, at $10,000. So it'd be a, a grand total of 15,000. So I'll make that motion. Is that second?
If I could just ask for clarification, to make sure I understand the motion. So you're saying, give them an additional 10,000, and what, we already gave them?
Right.
For five years?
Yes. Is that second?
Would, um, would you be willing to cut it to three years, and let's see where we go? Three years, instead of five, and see where we're at? And the reason I say that is, I, I do have some concern about, we don't receive much of the tax revenue that this place generates. The lodging, the meals, you know, all of that goes to the town. However, I also see the side that if this place doesn't succeed, Mr. Jones won't have anything else to promote. So, and we worked hard to get this place here, I don't wanna lose it. But I also think there's some other players that need to come to the table. So I, I would, if you're willing to amend your motion to three years, I will second it.
Mr. Carter, may I address you? You go through a budget every year, and you can't bind what this board's gonna do next year. If they wanna take it out, they can take it out. But what, I am thinking about the message you're sending by saying, "We think it ought to be five years." It doesn't obligate you, when the budget time comes around, you, this board can't obligate other boards down the road, except for things like bonds. So you could, you could do it. But i- if you cut it to three years, I think it sends a message to the people in Richmond. And that's what, that's who we're working with, that's why we're so enthused about it, because of that. So, again, we would appreciate anything, but five years sends a message to those people in Richmond that we're serious.
Well, I'm sure you all have thought about this, financially, excuse me, and that's what you all came up with, after you'd studied and realized it's gonna take XYZ. So that's why I'd say five years.
And Mr. Chairman, all three of us have made a, a yearly commitment for five years.
So the motion's still on the floor? Is that second?
Second.
All right, second discussion? We'll have a roll call vote.
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, again, we can say five years, but it's only five years if we vote to do it in the budget. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hips?
With that understanding, and that would give us enough time to have a presentation from the museum next budget year, with the understanding that I may not be on board with the additional ones. I, I just wanna make it clear, I don't wanna, here is I'm contradicting myself, but it is true that we could change our mind after, after that time.
And Mr. Chairman, since we're still in discussion phase?
Yes, sir.
So here, here's one of my concerns, which thankfully has been addressed with the new leadership at, at the museum, is that there has not been enough focus on the Appomattox location from the overall Civil War Museum folks. Granted, they're, you know, we're building a big facility down in Richmond, and that's where all their attention and money was going. But I wanna see some commitment from them, too. And I'm, that's why I said, three years, let's see where they're at in three years. You know, the, the new guy, he's been here, he's talked to us, they've done a few things, they've made some improvements. I wanna make sure those improvements continue. So, I'll vote for the motion, Mr. Chairman, but I'm gonna be watching to see what happens.
Further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, Mr. Hips? Mr. Henkel?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's right, excuse me. Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I'll, I also vote aye.
Thank y'all.
I said, "Thank y'all."
Before y'all go to your next business meeting, most of y'all already members, I'm gonna take this opportunity to give y'all a membership, God. I'm gonna ask you to support us. With your own, we need members. I've got a list back there, 1,800 number people, that have been members of the museum at one time or other, that the membership has lapsed, and that's within forty miles about, fifty miles about, 1,800 people.
I don't need one.
I'll give you something different.
Yeah, give her.
And that's also invitation, and the program works out of our life, and I think it's really
Thank y'all. Okay, next on the agenda is Mr. Bradford, Director of Appomattox Department of Social Services, and I see that he brought his ace along, Mrs. Kim Moore. So welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Administrator Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to come and.
Can you hear?
Thank you for the opportunity to come and share a little bit about the impact of social services on our local community. I would just begin by just sharing, you know, when most people think of social services, we think of Child Protective Services, we think of our SNAP and our Medicaid program. But this evening, I want to highlight the many programs that we administer by, that are administered by local county employees in the Social Services Department. When I began as director about twelve years ago, the number one issue that I seemed to impact or was brought to my attention was efficiencies among our department, efficiencies among our processes. And so we began, probably about twelve years ago, streamlining our processes where we were able to do that. And I will say, the, the pandemic exacerbated a lot of our issues going forward. But despite that, our department has continued to pull, pull through, and we have increased our efficiencies and our interactions with our clients on a daily basis. The programs we administer are very complex, very complex policy, and usually it requires at least two years before any worker in our department is fully proficient in their job. And as you can imagine, this creates a lot of obstacles for us because like the other hundred and twenty local departments of social services, we are locally administered and state supervised, meaning the state is responsible for our training. And as you can see from the pandemic, training needs were probably exacerbated throughout the state. The program report that I prepared for you, you know, we administer numerous programs that address the social, emotional, and the economic well-being of clients. And we are divided into three units, administration, benefits, and services. And administration includes myself, Kimberly Moore, who is our Assistant Director, and we have two administrative staff who also are front receptionists and provide additional support. Administration is tasked with the day-to-day operations of the department. And we also deal with the fiscal and the budgetary matters to come up, HR and payroll, and any performance evaluations or performance issues of our staff. So, and they also are the issuing staff for EBT cards. So we have that separation of duty that has to be within admin. Eligibility cannot approve an application and do, and issue a card at the same time. It has to be done by a different person in the department. We have about twelve staff that performs our benefits program. And generally, applications are processed, timestamp is usually thirty to forty-five days that we have to process the application. And I would generally say we do not take thirty to forty-five days. Generally, applications are processed at least within one to two weeks, depending upon the, depending upon the application and what program they applied for. Just to highlight some of our programs, our TANF program provides assistance to low-income families, and this benefit is distributed on a card that families receive, and it can only be used for the needs of the family. This is not a monetary, in terms of a check. It is on a debit card that they can use at, say, Walmart, or they can use at another business, but they cannot use it to purchase anything other than what they need for the family. You can't go and take it and purchase cigarette or alcohol or anything like that. And under that TANF program, we also have our view, which is Virginia's Initiative for Employment, not welfare. This is our engine of our, of the TANF program that helps clients get back into the workforce. This is the part of the program where we help clients build skills, help them attain certifications, say for a CNA or some kind of skilled labor or skilled trade. We can pay for car repairs. And over the course, just last fiscal year, in that program alone, we served a hundred and sixty citizens. So auxiliary grant, that provides a monthly benefit to income-eligible citizens who are in assisted living facilities. This program is an example of multiple units working together because under the auxiliary grant program, benefits are determined by our eligibility unit. But services performs the screening for the client, meaning that the screening usually entails the client's overall daily function. Are they able to bathe? Are they able to dress? All of those things are encompassed in that. That is done by our service unit. Admin processes the check. So we have one program that, say, sits under one particular department, but it requires all units to function synchly to get that done. Our Energy Assistance Program, and I'm trying to flow through so that we're not taking up too much time. We operate that program during the summer, in the fall, and the winter months. It provides our low-income citizens financial assistance to help with their power bills. We can pay for repairs, we can pay for heating units, cooling units, all of those things. It is, we can buy firewood, we can buy gas, oil, any, any of those things that citizens may need. Last program I wanted to just highlight under our benefits program is our Medicaid and our SNAP program. And Medicaid, as most of us know, provides the medical assistance that citizens use for medical services. And our SNAP program, program provides a supplement for food assistance for citizens. And last fiscal year, we served a little over three thousand citizens in our Medicaid program and close to five thousand citizens in our SNAP program. The spending for Medicaid, for our Medicaid program, and this is the actual spending, this means actual benefits paid to providers such as doctors and hospitals, was forty-two million dollars. And in the SNAP program, the spending was five point five million dollars. That's Appomattox. This is not Commonwealth of Virginia. This is our local community. These are real dollars coming back into our local economy, to the providers of goods and services to the citizens that utilize them. There's a real substantial return on the local allocation that we receive from the local board. Our local allocation last year was about two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. The return on that investment was about fifty-two million dollars is what we actually, was actually generated economically by local Department of Social Services. As we just sort of come out of post-pandemic, some of the things that we are dealing with is the Medicaid unwinding. What is Medicaid going to look like as we get past post-pandemic? Right now, a lot of our citizens and a lot of folks that are receiving medical assistance, we're not doing renewals for them, meaning they're just, they're on our rolls and, but once the public health emergency ends and they remove those suspensions, then we will be required to pretty much analyze those applications and determine whether or not they are qualified to receive that assistance. And that's probably about three thousand applications that my staff of, three or four that does their program will be, will have to undertake. And just so I'm not leave room for questions, the final thing I would like to talk about just is our services. We have five family services specialists who administer the, the programs of Child Protective Services, Adult Protective Services, Foster Care, our Adult Services Programs. And we, we, you know, our focus is on the protection and the prevention of abuse and neglect, and that's our primary focus and function under services. And I will say, our service case demographics are changing, they're changing drastically. We're starting to see a, a, a different type of client. We're seeing clients that have more substance abuse needs, we're seeing clients with more mental health needs. And another barrier that clients are facing, that some of our clients are facing, is transportation, transportation to actual service providers, transportation to the things that they need. And I would just wrap up, just to say that the programs we administer are complex and requires a, a, an understanding of our federal and state policy. In our department, we have navigated every challenge through this pandemic and especially keeping our clients and our staff safe. And as a department, we'll continue to do the great work that we continue to do every day at the department that a lot of citizens are thankful and appreciative for. So thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them.
And thank you. Floor is open for any discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I've got one question. Is y'all's office open to the public yet?
We are open to the public.
So if I come, is the door still locked?
The door is still locked.
Okay, so, so if I come down there tomorrow and need services and the door's locked, what do I do?
All you have to do is push the doorbell.
And somebody will open it?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The doorbell has been there since.
Is there a reason the door is locked?
The issue for us is we have a very small lobby. So one of the things to address the, the pandemic was we locked the door. We locked the front door to keep our staff, to keep staff safe, but also to reduce community spread because our lobby is very small. If we opened our front door, because it's not a push door, we don't have the ability to gauge who comes in and out of that door. We're working to try to get a door where we can have, where we can allow, if a client pushes, they can, they can come in and the receptionist can buzz them in like some of the other county facilities, but we have to wait for them to be able to install the door.
Any other questions, concerns? Thank you, sir.
No problem.
We need it, we running behind here. Had scheduled like seven o'clock public hearing, and we need to get into this, and I'm sorry that we are running behind. So public hearing, Appomattox Volunteer Fire Department Fire Training Facility lease agreement. After being duly advertised and in accordance with Code of Virginia fifteen point two dash eighteen hundred B, the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors will receive comments on a proposed lease. The proposed lease is related to the property known as a portion of point ninety-nine acres of the property of Morning Star Road to Appomattox Volunteer Fire Department in order to develop a fire training facility. The property is identified as three oh, three thousand seven Morning Star Road or as a portion of tax parcel number sixty-six eight twenty-nine. The county attorney has prepared a lease for our consideration. Anyone here to speak for this?
Mr. Garrett should be on the phone.
Uh, Chief Garrett. Chief Garrett. Chief Garrett. Anyone here to speak for this? I have two letters that was written to the board. First from Sergeant John A. Williamson. The tactical team would greatly benefit from another training facility in our division. We would be able to use this facility to train in multiple areas of our job. This would include the cleaning of rooms and medical. These two areas are what are most important to our mission. Furthermore, we would, we would be to use the area in order to teach local units to provide better service throughout the community. This would not only provide a liaison center for multiple jurisdictions to work together, but a center to allow further learning. I feel this would be a profound impact on the greater good of the community. Second letter is from Robbie Richardson, saying the following. Said, sorry for the last minute email, however, I wanted to voice the sheriff's office support for the fire department training location project. I have spoken with Chief Jonathan Garrett about this great opportunities. This will not only provide the firemen, excuse me, but for our deputies as well. This facility will provide a location where different scenarios can be ran that can be ducked, that can't be done with what is provided at this point. These trainings give deputies the expertise they need in the case of a real-life event presents itself. I appreciate your time, and please call me if you have any questions. Anyone here to speak against this? Speaking against this means releasing of the property to the Appomattox Volunteer Fire Department. Here and now, I'll close this public comment period. Now, I'll entertain a motion at this point to approve the lease agreement or not.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the lease be approved and that you be authorized to sign
Thank you. Is that second?
Second, with one condition, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think we've got the tenant and landlord swapped in the, in the lease agreement.
Is it? I had no.
If I'm reading it right, we're the landlord, they're the tenant, right?
Okay. So with your, with your motion, okay, very good. Further discussion? Is that second?
I second it.
Oh, okay, excuse me. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Number three.
Yeah, but we've got, oh, yeah. Okay. Next, excuse me, it's Carver Price Legacy Museum Board. Please review the letter of request submitted by Mrs. Ora McCoy, President of the Carver Price Legacy Museum Executive Board. On behalf of the Carver Price Legacy Museum Board, Mrs. McCoy is requesting the Board of Supervisors' consideration to renew and modify the current lease with a lifetime auto renewal at the option of the tenant, provided that the tenant continues its nonprofit status and objectives for the space occupied by Carver Price Legacy Museum. Excuse me. Additionally, they would like to be granted the first right of refusal to purchase the leased property if the property should not be up for, if the property ever should be up for public auction. Floor is open for discussion on this. We have a letter that Mrs. McCoy sent to each of us. I have a, go ahead, Mr. Hogan.
I was just going to ask, the current lease expires in twenty-five?
Yeah.
Would that be the appropriate time to do a new one, or would we want to do a new one now?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to add another letter to what we sent in, if you don't mind. I'm Ora McCoy, and I live at seventy-three ninety-seven Oakfield Road, Appomattox, Virginia. And we have submitted another letter that we would like for your, to take under consideration. Okay, the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors, the Carver Price Legacy Museum has made significant investment into the property, as had the Commonwealth of Virginia, with the understanding that they would be able to have a long-term lease on the museum. We have obtained five hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the Virginia Department of Historic Resources pursuant to our memorandum of understanding that the funds were to be used long-term for the preservation of the property and its history. That the objective of the museum is preserving this history of the schools is of a paramount importance to the Carver Price Alumni Association, the Board of Tourism, the state, the public at large, and the members of the boards who have worked to protect the school's historical significance. The lease of the remainder of the billing seem to contradict the right in the lease of the Carver Price Legacy Museum, specifically that the other tenant is being given the right to purchase the property in that lease, and that right has already been given to the Carver Price Legacy Museum, who plans to exercise that option when approached and when the property is no longer encumbered by the county's bond. So we would like to submit this letter to you. Do I give it to you, Ms.? Do I give it to you, Ms. Adams? And before I come up, I would like to invite all of the members to come to the soft opening of the Carver Price Legacy Museum on Saturday. You will be surprised at what's going on. We would have start at eleven, hopefully end at one, but we invite all of you to come, please.
Okay, thank you. Okay, gentlemen, in the discussion on this, I think, Mr. Hogan, you was talking about when the lease ran...
I was just asking, what's the better timeframe with the, most appropriate timeframe to do this?
Right.
I'm not opposed to what they're asking for, I'm just thinking practical terms with, they already got a lease for three more years. Is that the time to do this, or do we just... If they, if they need some commitment long-term, I, I, I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Well, it's two things I would say. Uh, I agree with you, it caught my attention when the lease did, uh, does run out in twenty, twenty-five. Why come now, three years early? Second thing is, the right to first, was it first, uh...
Refusal.
Huh?
Refusal.
I can't hear you.
Right to first refusal.
Right to first refusal, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, I can't go along with that, because Mr. Jones, Mr. Bruce Jones, is that right? Boone. Mr. Boone, uh, has stepped forward and took the giant step of obtaining the property up there by lease, and is finally, finally going to make something very, very, I think, educational for this community. Now, not saying anything against the Carver Price Legacy Museum, hey, you've had twenty years, over twenty years to go on this. I understand, at times, things were tight, at other times, no. But I cannot support first right refusal on this. Now, as far as redoing the lease with specific items in it that you want, I don't have a problem with that. I just don't understand it, but I don't have a problem with it. That's my take, gentlemen. Yes, sir, Mr. Hogan.
Can I ask, who was the second letter from?
It's from the Carver Price Legacy Museum Board.
Oh, okay, okay.
Any other conversation? Mr. Hinkle?
Mr. Chairman, based on what Mrs. McCoy said in the second letter from the museum about that their lease says that they have first right of refusal, I, just, I think we ought to check with the county attorney, do we have a conflict here, or do we not have a conflict? Because I do know that part of the agreement with the ACA was, if they do what they said they were going to do, you know, yeah, we want them to have the building because they have a proven record of getting things done and getting it done right.
Uh, Mr. Latchit, can you?
Yeah, the, uh, the Carver Price lease identifies the portion of the property that they're using, and we define that as a property, so their lease doesn't cover the whole building. It covers those couple of rooms up front, the section that we leased to them. There is a clause in there that says at some point in the future, they would be granted, but there's no terms. It's, it's a statement of intent, but it's not, it doesn't cover the entire building, it never has. The, if, we define, we said they, they would, in the future, we may grant them a right to purchase the property, but the property is defined as the part they have. And Mr. Boone's organization, they purchased subject to this lease, so they can continue. When the agreement, if they purchased the con, if they purchased the entire facility, they will purchase it, one of the things that's in the terms of the agreement with Mr. Boone is that they're, they're this lease and the community college lease, and they're subject to those terms. So, what would happen is, they would actually have to negotiate with him, not us, at some few, if, in fact, he exercises, as his organization exercises their right to purchase the entire facility, then they would need to strike a deal with him if they want to purchase the part they use. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Their, their part is a, is a subset of the entire facility. And that's, their lease has this subset, we define, we say, as I've identified in Exhibit A, we call that the property and the Carver license, Carver Price lease. And then we say, at some point in the future, they may be granted a right of first refusal on the property. Again, that doesn't define the entire, eh, property itself, simply the part they're currently using. And Mr. Boone's organization purchased subject to this lease. So, he would need to honor this lease in the same way that we honor if he purchases the facility.
If, if the museum had a lifetime lease, I guess the question is, whose lifetime?
Well, we couldn't do that now, because we actually signed the contract with ACA. And that contract says, these are the, these are the contracts, we gave them a copy of this Carver Price contract. So, they, they signed their contract subject to these, but we now no longer have a right to amend these. They would need to, again, they need to speak with ACA. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
But, but we don't have the authority, we, when we entered into agreeing with ACA, that document says, this is under them now, not us, technically. And so, they, if they wanted lifetime rights, they need to negotiate that with ACA.
That would also include, I would assume, negotiating with Mr. Boone. And I love the sign up there. It's nice, it looks nice, but to me, that sign is placed where he's renting, or has a leasing agreement.
That's technically true, I believe, yes.
So, I don't know if Carver Price Legacy Museum realizes that or not.
May I speak again?
Yes, ma'am.
Carver Price Legacy Museum realized how much money, like, already, we've spent over two hundred thousand dollars on that building with the faith that you were going to honor the con, the lease agreement that we had with you. And, and this is just, what are we going to do? We don't, we didn't raise this money, the state didn't give the money to us to give to Mr. Boone. The state raised that money to have a legitimate museum in Appomattox County, state-of-the-art museum. So, I mean, it's just floors me that you don't see what we're going through after we have raised all of this money. We didn't raise it for Boone, and we didn't, we raised it for the county.
Understand that, purely understand it, but, I was, you're a day late, you're a day late.
Well, you all then called us in to ex, uh, explain the lease agreement or anything before they were signed.
We did.
That's what I thought. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I suggest that if there's some disagreement about what the lease actually says, then maybe, you know, we get some, who, get their attorney to talk to our attorney and...
We don't have an attorney. We've depended on your attorney to draw up the lease with good faith.
I mean, I don't think anybody's planning on pulling a rug out from under you.
Well, if we, if we don't have access to that front of the building where we thought we had the lease agreement on, you all pulling the rug from under us. Because we don't want to, uh, uh, negotiate with Mr. Boone, and I can't see why we would have to negotiate with Mr. Boone unless you void our lease agreement.
Are you using space that's not leased to you?
We're just using the front of the building.
Isn't that all under, isn't that all under your lease?
Yes. Yes.
So, what's the concern?
The concern is that we don't, we won't have, after Mr. Boone takes over, we will not have the front of that building.
It's in your lease, correct? Maybe we need, maybe we just need to, uh...
Yeah, we got that.
This, this is not the appropriate forum, I guess.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, but, I mean, I couldn't let this go on without...
If there's questions about what the lease does or doesn't encompass, uh, I think that needs to be addressed to the county attorney or the staff.
Okay, yeah.
And we'll get to answer to those questions and, and...
Let's sit down and kind of put the two together and show how they work together.
Okay.
They're interrelated, they're interconnected.
Well, am I clear in thinking that we still have the front of the building?
I don't remember what was in Exhibit...
In the meantime, can I ask a question?
Please.
I think this is all contingent upon if he purchases the building, then they would have to negotiate. Right now, there's only a, a lease of purchased agreement.
Right, right now it says, ACA, Mr. Boone's organization, agrees that there are certain existing leases which will continue through this lease and even if he purchases the property. So, when, when ACA signed this agreement, it was with the understanding that their agreement was there and would stay there.
And, and you all were told that by Mr. Boone, were you not? Verbally only.
Yeah.
Verbally only?
Yeah, that's why we're here.
I'm, I'm glad to, you know, make an appointment with, with the county administrator. We'll sit down, there's really only two paragraphs, and we can go through them and make sure everybody's questions are covered and taken care of.
Thank you, because we're happy if we could add lease, renewable lease. We don't have any problem, we'll continue to raise money to bring to Appomattox, to increase the revenue, if we can continue with our lease that we have right now.
We want to do what's right. We, as a board, don't want to sit up here like a bunch of idiots and do something different, contrary to what's on paper, as you say. So, I think it is a good idea to get the two together.
For clarification.
It's written, yeah, it's written in there.
And... That's all we can do, so...
Thank you.
No, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hinkle.
I think that we, you know, should let them know that, you know, I, for myself, I would not have voted for the ACA lease if it did not include a permanent place for the Carver Price Museum.
Thank you so much.
And I think that all the, the whole board feels that way.
Thank you so much, that, that's received to us.
Yeah, that was, that was every thought in each board member's mind, and you go in the same front door as we, as you're currently going in.
And all we...
That's what we thought.
Requesting for clarification, that's all we want.
Okay.
So, now, like, you're not going to speak tonight?
Uh, yeah.
And I, and I think the county attorney explained that when we met, but there's probably been some other rumblings that have taken place that's confused things. So, this is a good opportunity to reiterate some of that.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's move right on. Ms. Janet Hicks, Circuit Clerk Kirk, clerk, I get to, welcome, ma'am.
Welcome, good evening. Thank you all for allowing me a moment just to address you this evening about an item on your agenda. I hope each of you have had an opportunity to review the email that I sent on September the twelfth, an emails exchanged between Ms. Adams and myself. To quickly recap, I'm here before you to ask that funding the state legislature has appropriated for my office be put in place to be retroactive to August the first, two thousand and twenty-two. If you all reviewed the state compensation board's overview of the fiscal year twenty-three budget priorities and policies, you will see on page two that funding was included to support a five percent across-the-board salary increase effective August the first for all constitutional officers and their employees. Also, funding was provided to increase the salaries of all circuit court clerks and their compensation board-funded staff positions by one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars effective August the first, two thousand and twenty-two. This twelve fifty was to be applied after the five percent was added to the previous base salary. The new entry-level staff salary for staff in the circuit court became thirty-five thousand fifty-three dollars effective August the first. The legislature has seen there's a problem with the salaries for staffing in our office and has granted this funding to help alleviate compression and to keep salaries in line with the district courts. Please keep in mind, this is at no cost to the county. This funding will be reimbursed back to the county from the state. I'm not here asking for any additional funding from the county, but I do ask that any supplements that have previously been funded and appropriated in my budget remain in place. I thank you for your time and consideration of this matter, and I'm open to any questions that any of you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Hicks? Thank you for coming, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we appropriate the five thousand dollars coming from the comp board back into the clerks', uh, personnel and salary land item.
Motion due, may I say, second?
Second.
Discussion. Have a roll call vote? Mr. Hicks? Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Okay. Next is, we need to schedule a public hearing?
Number six.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, yeah. Next is special event permit application request. Chippy Hippie Vintage Market. Attached for the board's review, the special event permit application from Ms. Monica Evans for a Chippy Hippie Vintage Market to be held on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, from ten a.m. to four p.m. This event, or the event, will be located at thirty-one fifty-four James River Road in Gladstone, Virginia. This is a fall market featuring vintage and homemade artists, handmade artists. The admission fee is five dollars per person. Children twelve and under free, that will be alcohol, food vendors, and a string band performing. This is a rain shine event. The zoning administrator, building official, fire marshal, sheriff, public safety director, and county administrator have reviewed the application for compliance with local regulations and have added necessary, well, it's, it's, make a, uh, comment there. Floor is open for any discussion on the hippie flippy application request.
She's here to speak to us.
Oh, I didn't know that. Please state your name.
So, it's Monica Evans, and I'm located on James River Road in Appomattox County. Um, and we're looking forward to hosting the event. It's a handmade artisan, uh, market with vintage vendors as well. There'll be a couple of food trucks, um, the alcohol will be served by Albemarle Satterworks, so you're probably familiar with them because they've served at other events within the county. Um, do you have questions, specific questions for me?
The floor is open for any questions for Ms., Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Oh, it must have...
I guess in light of the last event application we need to ask.
I was not prepared for that.
Uh, so, is the label the Chippy Hippie Event, uh, is in the cannabis or marijuana promotion at this event?
No, there is one vendor, the Hollow Oak Farms, which you're also probably familiar with. They're, they, they don't fall under the marijuana category, um, but they are a licensed hemp. So, they will have a ten-by-ten space, um, and they serve at the Appomattox Farmers Market in town. Um, they're legal and have their paperwork in order, um, but it's just, um, the hemp and not the other components.
Thank you. Are, are you going to allow that?
Am I going to allow it?
Yeah.
At the event?
At the event.
So, they, so vendors register and, um, pay a fee to set up, so they are a registered vendor. So, they'll be on site. So, each vendor has a ten-by-ten tent space, so they'll be under that.
Mr. Hogan?
I guess what he's asking is, uh, this is on private property, correct?
Yes.
So, are you going to allow folks to smoke weed at that, at your event?
Oh, they don't sell weed. I don't...
Oh, I understood you say you did, people going to have it.
Oh, no, no, Hollow Oak, no, there's...
It's a vendor, it's hemp farm, they...
Yeah, but they're going to sell it there, right?
I don't know.
No, they're hemp. No, it's a different, I guess it's the way they process the plant. And my, my, I do have a limited knowledge of this.
Gender process.
All right.
So, yes, but if you've ever visited the farmer's market in town, they're usually there too.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter, if you'll e, ease your mind, this is a Mrs. Hinkle-approved event.
All right, all right.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. No other questions?
Any other questions? That's, that's it, ma'am.
Well, thanks for your consideration.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the permit for the hippie chirpy hippie vintage market event. Know that, say that at all times.
Yes, sir. Motion may, is that second? Additional discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, scheduled public hearing, Mr. Douglas Faulkner, Jr., two fifty-three Huntley Springs Road has petitioned to have one point oh-five acres near the intersection of Huntley Spring, Springs Road... of Huntley Springs, Springs Road and Double Bridges Road rezoned from R1, low-density residential to A1 agriculture. At its September meeting, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend denial of the petition and have now forwarded that recommendation to our board for our consideration. So, we need to advertise for a public hearing, and as the staff has pointed out, for Monday, October 17th at 7:00 p.m. We need to, yes, sir.
I move that we schedule a public hearing for October 17th at 7:00 p.m.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan?
Um, and, and this is highly unusual when the planning commission unanimously votes to deny something. I, I would like to know more about why they denied it and, um, before we spend the money to advertise and have a public hearing. Or do we have to have one anyway, I guess?
You have to have one.
We gotta have one anyway, all right, never mind.
And I, and I did ask the petitioner if he desired to withdraw.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions? So, the motion is duly made and seconded? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is scheduled public hearing, zoning ordinance amendments. The planning commission had September regular meeting held a public hearing on various zoning ordinance amendments. Specifically, in 19.6-12 definitions, adding and amending definitions, 19.6-97.2 visual impacts, setbacks, and buffers related to utility scale solar by amending setbacks and buffers. 19.6-67 agriculture district deleting and amending certain permitted uses and conditional uses and adding small-scale solar to the following districts as permitted use. 19.6-70 R-3 high-density residential. 19.6-71 V1 Village Center. 19.6-72 B1 general commercial. And 19.6-72.1 B2 limited commercial. Following public comments, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend these amendments for our consideration. Staff has recommended a public hearing October 17th at 7:00 p.m. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move we schedule a public hearing for the zoning ordinance amendments on October 7th. 7:00 p.m. 17th, yes, excuse me.
Motion duly made, is that second? Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, scheduled public hearing, which is comprehensive plan text amendment, renewable energy policy. The planning commission had its regular September meeting held a public hearing to receive information on amendments to be, to the renewable energy policy in Chapter 3, Growth Management of the Appomattox County Comprehensive Plan. After receiving comments from the public, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendments as presented. Staff has recommended October 17th at 7 o'clock for a public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, make a motion to have a public hearing October 17th at 7:00 p.m. for the comprehensive plan text amendments for renewable energy.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is consent agenda, which includes approval of bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, land item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the vote on the consent agenda. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be consented by the board individually in order which they remove from the consent agenda immediately following consideration of the consent agenda. And you have before you, the consent agenda is, does anyone have any questions, concerns concerning the consent agenda as written?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion duly made, is that second? Discussion? Have a roll call vote? Mr. Hicks? Mr. Hinkle?
Aye.
Mr. Hogan?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Mr. Latchit? Thank you. Administrator's report?
No comment, other than you have a copy before you. If you have questions about that report, if you could just ask those at this time. I would like to add to the report that the school construction, we have $2,535 and $2,535,517 remaining. The rest of it has been spent. The projected date of completion should be by the end of October.
All right, any questions for our county administrator? Any concerns? I know it ought be one or two.
I think he's sitting against me.
Next is reports and informational items we have. The school financial report. Anyone have any questions concerning it? Now, we can get down to brass tacks. Supervisor concerns, Mr. Hicks? Mr. Hinkle?
No, sir.
Mr. Hogan?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do have one. One thing, um, I don't know if the folks up on this end of the county know it or not, but there's some paving operations going on on 460 on the east end of town, headed out towards Evergreen and Pamplin. I do have a, I don't know if it's the, I don't know if it's VDOT, or whether it's the paving contractor's responsibility, but, um, this morning, when they started, they put up, they barricaded the ramp down to 460 East from Confederate Boulevard. There were no, there was no signs, there was no warning, there was no nothing. You're driving along, and all of a sudden, the road is closed. And then they make you turn, told you to turn around, and then there was a, then you saw a detour sign as you're coming back into town and take a four-mile detour to get back to where you were.